Council come to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, could you please call and roll?
Here.
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 Carlstone.
President.
Hopkins.
Here.
Anne Stryland.
Here.
The city council has adopted a code of civility as elected officials. We pledge to promote civility through extending respect to others, listening to understand, disagreeing without disrespect, engaging collaboratively, and speaking up to address incivility. Also a reminder that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast for Pella TV. So anyone who speaks to council must approach the podium before speaking so that those listening at home can hear your comments and see you on camera. Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So moved.
Court. Brandon Horst and Stryland, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Raynerhorst?
Yes.
Anne Stryland?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. This time we have opportunity for public forum. Anyone wishing to address council regarding any agenda item, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Anne, Summit 1435 Basil Street. I don't know what we're talking about with Timber View tonight for sure, but I just want to kind of a quick reminder that we have talked in the past that if any more phases are added to this development, we will get that second entrance off of North Main. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with that because it is essential with the amount of traffic that's going up and down that stream now. Thank you.
I'm Rob Baestra from 420 Idaho Drive, and tonight I would just wanted to speak in favor of the CVB's proposal to you. That's the Convention and Visitor Bureau proposal for their new contract. A few years ago, you entrusted the CVB with a percentage and a period of time. And I'm not going to steal Anne's thunder, but Anne has done a phenomenal job with that money that has been entrusted to her. And you're going to see some startling figures tonight, I think. All we ask from the board members' perspective is that you consider that with a couple of points more of percentage and maybe even a longer duration. And what we've seen last year is we got forty percent more than we planned. Now that means that the city got forty percent more than planned as well as all of our revenues from hotel motel taxes come into the city. All of our visitors pay twelve percent. That's the five percent hotel motel tax on top of the seven percent with our regular taxes. And as one of those people who writes hotel motel tax checks on a monthly basis, and we now have three board members who do that on a monthly basis, it's exciting to see that money come back into town. So I ask you to favorably consider the CVB's proposal.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move on. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So.
Court. Ben Stryland, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Anne Stryland?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Raynerhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six seven nine four entitled, "Resolution Accepting Public Improvements for Timber View Plat One." Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item for those in attendance and for those watching at home. I'd like to direct your attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. As Mayor Ward stated, what we're discussing this evening with this resolution is acceptance of public improvements for Phase One of the Timber View development. Now, when we talk about public improvements generally, it's the street, the sanitary sewer, the storm sewers, and the water mains. Here, we do have a picture of the public improvements, but overall, looks roughly about two thousand linear feet of street network that we'll be accepting through this resolution. I would ask our Public Works Director, Denny Byrd, if there's any additional comments or information council should consider with this resolution.
Anything covers it now.
The staff is recommending approval this evening, and we also have received a certification from the engineer that the property was built in accordance with the city's plans and specifications.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So.
Court. Brandon Horst, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Raynerhorst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Anne Stryland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six seven nine five entitled, "Resolution of Pella City Council Approving Final Plat of Timber View, Plat One, Pella, Iowa, Accepting Easements and Accepting Conveyance of Lot A, Lot B, and Lot Thirty-Seven." Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. Mayor Ward stated that this evening's resolution would accept the final plat for Timber View Plat One. And we do have the geographical area of the development, but overall, we're talking roughly a twenty-one acre parcel. And what's being proposed by the developers, thirty-seven buildable lots that would be approved with this final plat as well. But it's just north of East Park Lane that we have here, and this is green highlighted area that we have shown right up here. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. It's important to note, as far as the final plat is concerned, we believe that it is in accordance with the preliminary plat that was previously approved by Pella City Council. Equally important to note that the final plat was reviewed by the Planning and zoning commission during their October meeting and approved unanimously. As far as the legal work and the legal documents associated with the plat, those have been reviewed by the city attorney. The city and the staff is recommending approval of the final plat.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval? So moved. Hopkins, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Anne Stryland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Raynerhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six seven nine six entitled, "Resolution Approving and Accepting Easements from the Gladys Vanderhart Trust and the Harold G. Vanderhart Trust Adjacent to the Timber View Plat One, Pella, Iowa, Close Development." Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, for this item, I'd like to ask our planning and zoning director, Jerry Vadas, to explain this item to the council.
Thank you, Mike. Honorable members of the council. On certain developments that are phased, that go through, meaning there are a small portion of a bigger project, a lot of times the infrastructure, meaning the roads, the sewers, the water mains, the utility easements, the storm drains, they extend past the perimeter. In that case, we need easements from those property owners for those utilities to be put in the ground. In this case, this is what you're accepting. This is a small phase of a bigger Timber View tract that, as we said, we have Phase Two, Three, and Four coming. But on the north side, we have what would have water main easements onto the Vanderhart property. We have sewer mains and storm grid and storm grid facilities. So these easements are what Vanderharts have given for the future development of the project. And when that time comes, those will be dedicated to this thing.
So the future, what was it in the north?
Basically, the entire north of this property and what would be on the west of this property is all future development.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right, can I get a motion for approval? Hopkins, Carlstone, any further discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Anne Stryland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Raynerhorst?
Yes.
Butler?
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six seven nine seven entitled, "Resolution Ordering specifications, Form of Contract, and Notice to Bidders for Furnishing Sixty-Nine KV SF Six Circuit Breakers in Connection with the Substation Transmission Improvements Project, Authorizing the Taking of Bids Therefore and Fixing a Date for the Hearing Thereon." Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor Ward stated, what we're considering this evening, what we're really doing with this resolution is authorizing staff to see bids for the substation transmission improvements project. Now, the estimated cost of materials for this project is roughly $200,000. We do have a description of the circuit breakers that will be replaced at the east substation. Now, as far as the bid lighting schedule for this, if council were to approve this resolution this evening, we hold a bid lighting on this project on February seventh. Our hearing in which council would consider a construction contract on this or materials contract rather would be on February eighteenth as well. So once again, what council is simply authorizing staff to do a seat bids for this process, and you're really establishing February eighteenth as the public hearing date for the project.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Court. Brandon Horst, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Raynerhorst?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Anne Stryland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Can I get a motion for approval of the abstract of bills number twenty-one sixty-seven?
Move to approve initial warrants.
Court, Brandon Horst, Ben Stryland, any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Raynerhorst?
Yes.
Anne Stryland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member have any other business you'd like to have addressed this evening? Yeah, John?
How are we doing on progress on the soccer field for getting bids or engineering or anything done?
As far as our community services director, Jeanette Long, correct me, but we've recently approved the engineering. And I believe the engineers are working on the project. And Jeanette, if you can answer council member Butler's question, please.
We have awarded the engineering contract. They have completed the survey work, so now they're working on design.
All right, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Well, I got another question about what kind of progress are we making on our well number two?
As far as with that, Denny, if you could shed some additional information on it as far as well number two and the timeline, as far as the repairs to well number two?
At the mic, at the mic, at the mic.
Well, unfortunately, we got bumped. There was some other smaller communities there towards the end in nicer weather that were just playing out of water where we were about out a year and a half ago, and they bailed us out. So now they're waiting for a window of opportunity in the thirties and forties, and it's maybe an eight day, nine day process. By the time they pull it all, scrub it, clean it, put new parts, put the new pump to the bottom. So the guy's been talking to them every so many days, but now they gotta look for that window or it's probably in March. We can run number two if we have to. It's just a matter, we have to flush it for a day, day and a half, and we'll go through pre-filters quicker. They're a little bit expensive, but if we had to go back to well number two, we could do it in a couple of days.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Any member of the public have any other business you'd like to address council with this evening? If so, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address, please limit your comments to three minutes. All right, we will adjourn to policy and planning to discuss. First item is the hotel distribution agreement with the CVB.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, and Mayor Ward stated, we're here to talk about potential renewal of the city's agreement that we have with the Convention and Visitor Bureau. This current agreement is set to expire on March thirty-first of this year. Now, under the current agreement, the city allocates sixty percent of our hotel motel taxes to the CVB. It's important to note, under Iowa code, we must be able to demonstrate legally, if we're going to collect the tax from the city's standpoint, that at least fifty percent of the hotel motel tax funds are spent supporting tourism in the community. That's kind of the summary on this, but there's a few more items that count towards that that we included in the package as well. But overall, the intent of Iowa law is to support tourism in your community if you're going to collect the hotel motel tax. Now, a little bit of background on this, over the last three fiscal years for the city, the total hotel motel taxes range between annual collections of $145,000 all the way up to just shy of $636,000. Most recently, when our fiscal year ended on June thirty of two thousand and twenty-four, it was at $553,000 on this as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. As was stated earlier, Anne Frost from the Convention and Visitor Bureau, our executive director, is in attendance this evening to discuss the proposed agreement, which would be a five-year extension that is being proposed. In addition, the CVB is also proposing an increase on the percentage collected from the current sixty percent up to sixty-two percent of funds. That'd be about the $6,200 annual increase based on collections that we had in two thousand and twenty-four. Now, from staff's standpoint, we believe the CVB does an outstanding job promoting our community. We're very happy with the arrangement that we have. But it is important to note, when we talk about a potential five-year agreement, as council is well aware, there's been numerous challenges faced by Iowa cities, through by cities throughout the state of Iowa with the property tax reform in the state of Iowa. And what we're recommending, our official recommendation, we support the CVB on this. We also think when you're talking about a five-year agreement, that it's wise to go through the city's budget process. That's what we've told other vendors or other contractors that perform services for the city whose contracts are expiring as well, that they'll be considered during the city's budget process. If we were to choose that path, we would discuss the CVB's request either on March tenth or March eleventh. That's when the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six budget work sessions will take place. And then if we had a direction from council on these dates, we'd be able to come back with a formal contract on March eighteenth as well. So it'd be before the contract expires if we choose to go through the budget work session. So with that, Mr. Mayor, before we turn the floor over to Anne, is there any questions for staff on the current agreement, what's being proposed by the CVB?
It does appear so, so we'll give Anne the floor. Thanks for being here. Thanks for the little gift bag.
Yeah, everybody has a packet of different things that we have produced and also our visitor guide for two thousand and twenty-five, and then an invitation to open house on Thursday. So I just wanted to thank you for letting me come and present and talk about the last three years. Just as a reminder, Visit Pella is a 501(c)(6) nonprofit, so that doesn't allow us to always apply for all the grants to provide extra income for Visit Pella as a 501(c)(3). So your support really helps us continue to tell the unique story of Pella, our heritage, our culture, our attractions. And having repeat overnight guests and new guests come is so important to us, and your funding helps with that. So we are committed to create long-term, sustainable economic growth for our community while ensuring that Pella remains a welcoming and memorable destination for all. Thank you. So this is our Visit Pella Board of Directors in the Visit Pella team listed there. And I just wanted to thank the Visit Pella Board. They have been super the last three years, supporting our organization, our staff, and all of our events. What we have accomplished in the last three years, we've been really busy, not only just marketing, but we updated our bylaws, our employee handbook, and policies, which I felt was really important to have a strong organization. We also increased staff hours because our office was busier, so we needed people in the office at all times. We did break out our general fund, so we still have our general fund, but then we also created another account for Tour of Homes and Care Smart. That's a huge event. Tour of Homes supports Care Smart. We wanted to separate that funding. And then because of COVID and the pandemic, we realized that we needed an operation reserve fund. So we take a certain amount of funds received from our monthly check now, and we put that in operation reserve fund. Our goal is to make sure that we have a cushion just in case something catastrophic happens again or if we need new computers or if we want to give to a project within the community. I think that shows our financial stability as an organization, that we are thinking about the future too, not just like Rob said, we had a stellar year. That's wonderful, but not every year is going to be a stellar year. We hope it is, but let's see, what else? We have received grants and awards. Two years ago, we received a $10,000 grant to update our website, which ended up costing $18,000. But we received in two thousand and twenty-four over almost 500,000 hits on our website. That's a lot of people going to the Visit Pella website to check out Pella. This year, we've received a $5,700 grant from Travel Iowa to produce a life-size wooden shoe. It's going to be made of aluminum actually, but it's a great photo opportunity for the community, for our visitors. Marketing and visitor engagement. We conducted a whole refresh of our visitor guide, and I want to thank Bailey, our graphic designer. She really led the cause of that. When you look at the two thousand and twenty-five visitor guide, it's like reading a magazine. It's articles. It talks about Pella. It makes people want to come here. Online and social media presence. We launched in two thousand and twenty-four a wheelchair accessible video series along with a whole ad in our visitor guide that just talks about accessibility in Pella. We want everybody to be able to come to Pella and enjoy this. Of course, social media, different types of marketing, that all costs a lot of money. Then we also have Care Smart, which we want to expand, and we want to keep growing in marketing. We hosted the Travel Iowa Insider Meeting in two thousand and twenty-three, and we've received the bid for the Iowa Leadership Boot Camp in October of two thousand and twenty-six. We've got some great things coming down. We're adding two pages to our website, a wedding destination page. And I want to say with that wedding destination venue campaign and website page, we actually got buy-in from multiple venues and businesses in the community. That just showed that they supported us and they believe that we are doing the right marketing for them. And we're going to have a blogger page. Lots of articles and different topics will be hosted there. Okay, community collaboration. Sorry, Mandy, is this slide five? Thank you. Okay, thank you. In the last three years, we exceeded our budget in two thousand and twenty-four by forty percent, like Rob had mentioned. With that extra funding, we have pushed out a lot of printed material, material that maybe we could not have afforded if we were at a lower budget. You can see also in your packet the two thousand and twenty-three economic impact for Marion County. From two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three, we had an eight percent increase in tourism dollars in Marion County with $53.3 million coming into just Marion County for tourism. Now, of course, that includes Knoxville and the spread cars and all of those things. But I would say that Pella is probably the main driver for tourism in Marion County. We had an increase in every category, lodging, food and beverage, recreation, retail, and transportation. And Marion County collects point seven share, point seven percent share of the state tourism dollars, which is 1.1 billion tax dollars generated from tourism. That's a lot of money coming into Iowa. So where have we spent our marketing dollars? We have put an ad in the Chicago White Sox yearbook. We have advertised in Dutch the Magazine in Canada. We have done a taste travel and tour. We have done a global heroes. All of those different print marketing is in the thousands of dollars. But when we look at our website or surveys that we conduct, finding out where people are coming from, it is working because they are coming from outside of Iowa, and that's exactly what we want. When people travel, they usually spend, for a family of four, about $417 a day. That's food, transportation, hotels, attractions. We want them to come from further away to stay longer. So from our data that we're collecting, the top states are Illinois, Texas, Nebraska, Missouri, Wisconsin, Kansas, Oklahoma, and Florida. We have seen an influx of Canadians too, and I think that really is because we're marketing specifically to those Dutch areas in Canada. So a few things that we have for initiatives and goals for the next five years is, of course, continuing those community videos. We want to highlight that Pella is accessible for anybody, and this includes some inclusion. What can we do if people maybe are at a lower income? We still have lots of things that people can do in Pella. Age inclusion. We're not just for the older folks. We're for the younger folks. And then accessibility and abilities. We're going to continue that marketing. We want to expand the Care Smart, Dutch Christmas Market. We just received the survey back. Bailey printed that off today. People love the market. They think it's great. It's also wonderful for our local retailers for people to come and spend money. We want to have year-round visitor engagement, not just two of time, not just Care Smart, but all twelve months of the year. I like being strategic, so I like strategic marketing. I want to make sure that I have the best ads going out, and where are they going to go for the best return on our dollars? Expanding wedding and event tourism, professional development for our staff. I think if you don't invest in your team, then they'll be stagnant, so we need some professional development. A partnership with Pella Fiber. I have spoke to Doi about what can we do to have some sort of commercials playing at our hotels that are on a loop. If somebody's here for business travel and they see a little commercial about Pella, maybe they'll want to bring their family back here. Board support, of course. We want to continue to equip the Visit Pella Board to serve our organization and be good ambassadors. And then financial responsibility. We will continue to be financially responsible with the funds that you give to us. So your continued support matters. We're asking for a five-year contract, which historically, when CVB and PACE used to be one organization, it was a five-year contract. We would like to have that again. It's just easier to plan a budget five years out instead of three. The more money you invest, the more money you get out. That's just with any business. I think from the numbers for the past three years since I've come on board, you can see that the numbers have gone up. And so I think a two percent increase, $6,200 a year, that's one ad in a magazine in New York City. That's not even a week's worth of digital billboards in Texas. Marketing is very, very expensive, and those are just some avenues that we would like to take as an organization. Does anybody have any questions?
When you speak of expanding the market, is that more huts or an additional weekend?
Oh, if you would like to volunteer for additional weekend marketing, you can, and then we'll sign you up for all day, every day, but it's more huts. Yeah, we do have more vendors applying for the market than we have space. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll say, I watched that market be put up and taken down, and there's an incredible amount of volunteer hours spent doing that. It's a great event for the community. It brings in lots of tourism dollars.
It does, yeah. I'm just glad the weather wasn't like this.
It was pretty cold on Thursday, but not this cold.
Yeah, yeah. Anybody else have any other questions?
No, I just have an observation. Anne, you do an incredible job. You really do. You are an amazing ambassador for our community, and I really love the way your organization works with numerous organizations throughout the community and with the multitude of businesses that you work with them. You're always pleasant, easy to speak with, and you've done just an incredible job of growing your organization. Appreciate it, and I thank you for that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, we've been wonderfully blessed with two great directors since I've been involved in tourism stuff in Pella with Jill before you and the job that you do now. So I don't think a lot of citizens of Pella quite understand the depth of tourism in this community. It's amazing. For a community our size, it is amazing. So I really appreciate the work.
Thank you.
So thanks.
Okay, anything else, anyone? As Mike said, we'll consider it in the budget, the new contract, so. All right, moving on, long-term facility plan decision criteria.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, Anne, what we're here to talk about this evening is the city's long-term financial, the long-term facility plan. And specifically, as we consider construction bids for these projects, what information council needs to have to may be able to make an informed decision. And we have an opportunity here for the first bids on these projects will be received. Technically, the indoor recreation center will be the first project formally considered by the city council. Bids on the indoor recreation center, construction bids, we have a tentative timeline. Bids on the indoor recreation center, construction bids, we have a tentative timeline for that project will be on April fifteenth of this year. And so a little bit of background on this, for those watching at home on Pella Fiber in attendance. In December, the last year, council directed staff to proceed with seeking bids for the indoor recreation center, the University Street, uh, extension project along with Baseline Drive, and the community center renovation. So once again, what we're here to talk about this evening is, once we consider and accept and receive those construction bids, what information and what criteria are we going to utilize, whether we decide to proceed with the projects or not? And so, again, from a staff standpoint, we want to make sure during this interim period of time before the first, before the rest of our project is bid in April of this year, that we do have some time, that if we have to get additional information around, that we make sure we meet those requirements. We want to provide the council with the information that you need to make an informed decision on these projects. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. A little bit of background on our tentative timeline for these projects. I believe the city's budget work sessions are actually on the tenth and eleventh of this year. That's right around that, that March time period. And those would be the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six budget work sessions. So that'd be the fiscal year that would start on July first of the, this year and extend through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-six. The reason why we think this is important is council is aware, at the city of Pella, we never budget the balance, uh, balanced budget just over one year period of time. These projects will all be somewhat government project-related, which means they're gonna be impacted by the city's general fund on it. For the general fund, we'll have a three-year financial plan. That three-year financial plan will actually encompass the first year of operations for the indoor recreation center as well as the community center on that. And so the financial plan will encompass that, and at that time, we'll also be reviewing the rest of the city's operations during the budget work sessions. The construction bid, we've technically established is April fifteenth for the indoor recreation center. That's the, technically, the decision date that we're targeted for making the decision on the recreation, uh, indoor recreation center. The fall of two thousand and twenty-five, and it may be late summer, that's technically the date that we have established for the community center renovation bid. So that'll be the date that council will consider the construction bids for the Pella Community Center. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as staff, when we went through the criteria and talked about our conditions for proceeding with the construction bid, what we have here is three of the main criteria. What we use, three of the bigger items that we had as far as decision-making process. The first one that we have on this is just the overall financial plan for these projects, and the city's financial commitment of twenty-nine-point-two million dollars for these projects. As you can see, we're going to add all three of these projects, and just to make sure everyone's aware of the infrastructure is the University Street Extension Project, the Baseline Drive Extension Project, the Long West and San Diego Sewer Projects and water main projects associated with those extensions. But overall, we're looking at a total project cost of just over fifty million dollars. Twenty-nine million is proposed to come from the city of Pella, and roughly twenty-one million from private sources or other sources that are non-city of Pella on this. Let's go ahead to criteria number two, Mandy. Uh, this is a big item for both the rec center and the community center, and that's the partnership agreements for these projects. What we envision, uh, through this process, and before we get to construction bids, that is that we would actually formally approve a partnership agreement for both of these projects. And what the partnership agreement simply does is what allows these projects to proceed. One of the key items within, and I'll state this, we're very fortunate that we have two entities that are willing to enter into partnership agreements with the city of Pella. Because when you look at those total private pledges or pledges outside of the city of Pella, twenty-one million dollars, if the city was doing this project entirely by ourselves with those pledges on it, we may be in a position where we would have to wait until we actually received the cash on hand from those private pledges before proceeding with these projects. Key item is, these pledges will be paid over, mostly over a five-year period of time. By entering into these partnership agreements in which these entities would be responsible for financing the private pledges and also assuming the risk of loss associated with the private pledges, it really allows these projects to be proceeded with construction this year on it. So these are two significant items. What we're planning to do, unless council instructs us differently on it, is with the recreation center is we'll have a contract for consideration before we get to April fifteenth on the rec center. Before the community center bids are considered, we'll also have a partnership agreement with the Friends of the Pella Community Center that'll be considered by council. But that's one of the key items that would allow the city to proceed with construction contract. Before I go on to this point, does council have any questions on the partnership agreements?
Tell me again, uh, Pella Rec, are they guaranteeing the pledges or?
What would happen if both of these agreements would be structured after what we did on the Pella Sports Park? And that agreement, what it simply stated is that the city pledged its financial resources, and then we had a nonprofit group that was Fields of Our Future, that was a five-oh-one-C organization. They also pledged their financial resources. Before council approved that contract with the, um, Fields of Our Future, we reviewed their financial plan and their financing plan before we entered into the contract. So if you wanted to look at it from just example purposes for the recreation center, it's roughly a thirty-four-million-dollar project. What we would be looking at is roughly a seventeen-million-dollar commitment from the city of Pella and a seventeen-million-dollar commitment from Pella Rec. And what the agreement would likely say is both parties would have to approve the design of the facility, the final design. But ultimately, when you get down to the construction contract on, on that project, is those invoices will be split on a fifty-fifty basis up until the financial commitments by both parties on it. So it really allows those projects to go through, and then when you look at the private pledges side of things on it, to answer your question, council member or member, yes, they would be responsible for the collection of the private pledges and also the risk of loss associated with that as well. And then that would be the similar agreement to the, the Friends of the Community Center for the community center project.
Okay, so we'll, we'll see their financials anyway.
Well, I wouldn't, the financing plan, that's up to council's direction for staff. What I would assume is that we'd handle it very similar to what we did with the Fields of Our Future. The staff reviewed the financing plan with, for the organization, and we simply made a report to council on our findings and our recommendations on that. But, um, that's certainly up to the discretion of council on how you instruct us to proceed, so.
We've talked about multiple designs on this, and we've talked about, well, let's wait until we see, uh, the bids come in. But we've never broken this out, so we have had a design of four gyms. Um, you know, and I can't remember all of these, but an indoor turf field and a little cardiac, uh, uh, cardio area and some of these things. And if we go out for bids, uh, I would like to see a bid broken down where we have four gymnasiums and possibly excluding the aquatic part of it, because those are the things that are very difficult, very expensive to build, very expensive to maintain, and very expensive to, um, uh, also to repair. You know, and, and I've heard the comment different times, let's see how the bids come in. But we've never seen it broken down, so we have a bid for four gymnasiums and some of the other things without the aquatic, you know, set. So I would like to see that, the bids go out that way with four gyms. Because we have seen the, uh, the base plan with the competition pool and two gyms. We've never had an option for four gymnasiums without the, um, aquatic, without the competition pool. So that's a, a big point that I would like to see when bids go out. I think we've had three options. Uh, that third option, I'm not too excited about. I just wonder, I have a third option with four gymnasiums, because I think those are, uh, much less expensive to build and very easy to administer. Very, very, the supervision cost.
So just so you know, we have a base bid that's two gyms, competition pool, turf area over the, uh, proposed rec pool. We have two alternatives to that bid that includes two more gyms without the comp, without the, uh, the rec pool. And we have another alternate that would include the rec pool and four gyms. So we do have the four gyms, but with the competition pool not being eliminated, but the rec pool being eliminated. So we have three different bid with a base bid and alternatives. And, and every time you talk about the design and how you don't like the design, you don't like this, I feel bad for, there's eleven people from this community that spent six months on a weekly basis with our architect and engineer. Eleven people from all cross-sections of recreation, uh, groups across this community spent countless hours designing what they felt the community needed. And so I feel bad for them that we keep attacking their design until we know what we can actually do here. And so I, I, I would prefer we would, would stop doing that to this group of people who have worked so hard to design this, along with an opportunity for public input, which we had after the design was put together. So you say you don't need a competition gym or a competition pool. I don't think the community agrees with you there. I think that that's a very important part of this project. And so we have three alternatives. Our base bid meets our current financial, uh, commitments. And we get a bid with both of those alternatives, then we need to find the money to pay for it, whatever that is, and then we can make those decisions.
But there's no, there is no option for eliminating the competition pool and having four gyms. Get those bids come up July with a competition pool, because aquatic pools are very expensive to build. And I think very easily, much more easily, money would be there for a, for four gyms. And that would be another option.
I agree one-hundred percent with you, but once we have the number, we can always make that a decision.
But are you getting the numbers for four gyms, the turf field, the indoor running track, and that sort of thing? I don't see that option. I don't see that, uh, that design.
There, there is no design without the competition pool. I would agree with that. I will agree with that.
I think there should be.
Well, we cert, we can certainly make that decision once we know the cost.
Well, are we gonna get a bid for that option? I think there should be an option going to bid for that.
Well, at this point in time, our architects and engineers are gonna have bid documents all ready to go January twenty-eighth, so it's, we can't do it now. Simply can't. And we agreed, we agreed back in December to go to the bids. I would like you to kind of explain the process of getting to the bids, because you put up an April fifteenth date. But that's when we have to make a decision whether we accept any bids or not. That's, the process starts before that. So can you go through the process prior to the April fourteen date?
Uh, Mandy, if you could go back to the timeline, please, uh, yeah. Leading up to this April fifteenth date, Mayor is, is correct. What will happen is we technically scheduled for February fourth, which would be our next council meeting. To meet the April fifteenth deadline date, similar to what we did on the substation improvements this evening, we're gonna have to establish a public hearing date by the council on this. And you're also going to have to authorize staff to solicit bids for the project. That resolution is scheduled for February fourth on it. And what it'll be is very similar to what we've seen for other projects, is you will authorize seeking a bid, establishing the public hearing date. The legal terminology that you'll say is authorized construction of the project, you're not authorizing the construction of the project. What will happen is that we'll simply authorize staff to seek bids with it. At that time, for us to have the, the meeting timeline for the April fifteenth deadline date, the engineers have to have all the bid documents ready and finalized. The date for them to do that is January twenty-eighth on this, to meet this schedule. And so January twenty-eighth, the plans will be completed. When we advertise and state that we're seeking bids, if someone wanted to come up, we have to have a complete bid set at City Hall for the project as well. So everything has to be done before council authorizes the project. That'll occur on February fourth. The bid letting for the project is actually going to occur on March eleventh. And so the city will know the, the bid results on March eleventh of this year. Uh, and, and it's right during our budget work session, so we'll have about a little over a month, uh, to analyze those bids, potentially have work sessions at councils on the bids on it as well. And on April fifteenth will be the public hearing date for the project. We've also asked council, and we've set an excited date, is April twenty-second. We wanted, had more time on the project. We have in our schedule a week extra time with this, so we can make a decision on April twenty-second if we still need more information in considering these bids. That's roughly the timeframe of the project, because it's a very detailed, uh, schedule that we have to have, a lot of lead time. So if we're going to have a public hearing date on April fifteenth, we basically have to have our plans done by the end of January for the engineers to keep the schedule.
Well, I, I think what Carol's driving at is that, um, it would be another alternate plan that will be dramatically less expensive than having a pool. So just seeing what, what does a pool add in the way of total cost? And if it's another option, might be an option that's more palpable at the time. And, um, you know, I don't, I don't know why we can't ask Chaya Hattery to just tell us what four gyms and what we're in the, changing rooms and all that stuff to go with it comes to. And as far as, as far as the people that have spent all this time on it, uh, we're the ones that have to be responsible for the money. So I'm not, I don't feel bad for them that we're not doing what exactly, or falling down and doing exactly what they want.
We have to justify and do what's reality they think. Here's, here's something that we can do with, in a construction project, this happens often, is that in a commercial project, you get a bid, and how general contractors go out to bids, they, they get bids from all different trades, and they get, you know, all different line items for contractors or whatever. So there's, there's a way that we can put it out to bid exactly how it is right now. And then we, we consider a bid, it gets open the eleventh. Um, that then you can actually go to whoever's below, let's say, whoever's below better. You can go to below better and say, what would be the deduct to pull that out? And that's, that's literally a, uh, it's an email conversation, and then we can actually see that, um, within, you know, they're probably gonna take a, a few hours or a couple days to do that. But it's, it's something that wouldn't, uh, wouldn't require like re-bidding everything. It would be just something that we can say, could we get a deduct after the fact? Here's, here's this, or whatever. It's, it's, that happens, that happens all the time, so I think we. I think we do that.
If it work like that, that's a lot.
Yeah.
I, I can tell you, um, I've had an awful lot of basketball coaches that say, uh, two gyms? Uh, you know, we've gotten information here about the tournament money that's gonna come to town, and they say, with two gyms, we're not gonna get any tournaments.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's important for us to look at for, and also to get that after the fact, if we can say, okay, and what's the deduct for the pool? Then we know. It's, it won't be a, it won't be an ordeal. It's not like going through the bid process. This, the way the bid process gets set up, you know, the architects have spent a lot of time, we re-engineered it. It would, it would put the brakes on this, but to do it after it's bid, it's easy. It doesn't take re-engineering. So I think, I think we can accomplish both, uh, both sides of this discussion without, without throwing brakes on something. Okay?
I do sense I was on the committee, uh, I didn't count the hours either. But I think it's important for us to remember, yes, we're in charge of the, uh, distribution of our purse, uh, but we also are here to represent the whole of our community, uh, not just certain, uh, groups. And that's, I think that's. And that's, I think that's some of the more challenging parts of a city is we have lots of varied interests, which is what makes our patchwork fabric and mosaic beautiful, but it also makes this job hard. As a physician, recreation is still significantly more important to the health of our community than basketball courts. Unless you're a orthopedic surgeon. But I think it's important to not, I gotta give the dollar, discussion pools are expensive. I think we also need to keep in mind, there's a large, maybe not as vocal, a large group of people that like to be in a pool. Secondly, I'd say respectfully, we have to keep in mind, we have a varied age pool that is highly utilized and ready to collapse. And I think we need to call it that in mind as well. So, this does accomplish a satisfying broad range of interest in our community. And I think the bids that we're looking to get would be helpful in discerning whether or not we can move forward with the minimum, try to meet the needs of the whole of our community, not just the course words. So.
How do you plan to handle the pool that's collapsing?
Um, I've got some ideas, it's not up to me to come up with. I still have my back if it's, I think it could be a free turf space or, um, football courts. We don't need more of those.
If we build only a recreational pool, what are the people that need a, I mean, if, if we build a competition pool, what are the recreational pool people that aren't good?
I, I think that's the dilemma. I, I don't see.
People need a recreational pool.
I agree. It's like really comfortable. And I think this is our opportunity in history to move forward with it, not be afraid of the dollar and know that it's gonna help our community move forward.
And can I ask a, a question on this? I think in the same side, I'm gonna put around the spot, or Community Services Director, Jada, when it comes to the pool, the competition, proposed competitions for a pool, all the current programming activities that take place in indoor pool, can they take place in the current proposed competitions for a pool?
Yes, that's a really good point, Mike. The competition pool, I know we, we keep referring it to as a competition pool. And yes, it can be used for competition, but it can also be used to support all of the activities that we have right now and increase programming. So, I think when you, when you talk about, I think Dr. Carlstone made a good point of, we're trying to address the broadest amount of our population as we can. In the month of December, we had twenty-two hundred patrons come to the indoor pool. Four hundred of those people approximately were there for aerobics. Uh, we had sport teams in for physical therapy. We had sports teams coming in for, to build cardiovascular health without doing damage to their joints. So, I think, um, there, there's a lot more to the competition pool than just competition.
So, it can actually be used in various ways as a core of recreation?
Yes, it can be used for, for everything that we're currently doing in our indoor pool plus expanding programming.
So, why would you run the pool tent?
We'll run it just so everyone's equally unhappy. So, we, the, the plan would be to kind of split the difference, which, which is what we do right now because we have the competition and the, and the recreation. So, we will just, and, and you might not think it, but two difference makes a huge difference in, in degrees. So, so both groups will give a little bit and it'll still be something that's very much needed in our community.
The, I mean, the bottom line is the, the plan is to build the whole entire facility that we're planning on. And so, by getting a number, getting a bid, then we know what the number is. We've had unbelievable community sport for this project. There's more community sport out there if we need it. So, at this point, uh, we're not, we're not approving any contracts, we're not doing any of that. We're just looking for what it would cost for a contractor to come in and build the facility that we've designed. That's all we're doing at this point. Well, I thought we had decided to do that in December. And I know that for an architect to change a plan or add a plan, it's not something you just do overnight. We're a long way down, they're ready to go with bid documents by January twenty-eighth. Because that was what we had as a group voiced approval for.
Mayor, I only have one more item I need, I need direction on. So, and we'll circle back just to make sure we covered everything. But as the operating for these projects, we wanna make sure we, we talked about it. If you recall, we talked about pulling a budget work sessions right around March tenth, eleventh, somewhere, somewhere right around that week on there. But as a part of the city's budget process, we'll actually be doing multi-year budgeting as we've done for the last twenty years and serve the city well. The financial plan in year three will actually be the first year of operations to the indoor recreation center. So, it's a big year for us from a financial standing, a planning standpoint. And my question is, we look at this, we wanna keep in mind from an operating standpoint, ultimately, but asking council is, would we consider bids on the recreation center? If we keep this schedule and assuming the schedule stays as is, April fifteenth on this, will we be required or should staff have an operational model in place and ready to go on that or a plan for this? And that's ultimately the question that I have for council on this. Because we wanna make sure the expectation is that we address the operating, how we're gonna operate the facility on it. If those details need to be worked out before April fifteenth, we wanna make sure we know council's expectations and we get to work on, on that, firm up, firm up some of these details and plans that we've been discussing at the staff level. For the operational challenges, again, like most cities throughout the state of Iowa, property tax reform's been a big issue. Most cities are showing somewhat of a budget deficit for next year. We're no different than a lot of cities throughout the state of Iowa. What we mentioned though is if we're ready to have operational models in place and try to firm up those decisions and the expectation is that we have a plan in place when we consider the construction bids, and normally the recreation center, but as well as the community center, A, that we're aware of it, but we work it into our financial plan. And what that would likely involve for us is adding additional programs, regardless if it's, it's a new recreation program or any additional service, would likely involve an evaluation of rates and fees for programs and services. And so, we look at, we're planning on doing that anyway for the city budget. But ultimately, my question for the council, Mandy, if we can go to the next side, please. Actually, that's the community center, we might as well jump into the rec center. We'll circle back to the community center just here in a bit. On here is for the operations, if we need to have a plan in place, what we would do is we'd evaluate two operational models. One would be if the city staff operated the recreation center. The second one would be is if a firm operated it. With firm, we believe we have enough time between the April fifteenth bid letting to hold someone an RFP to see if there's interest in firms in operating the rec center for us. May not be able to finalize contracts and have it to that point. But at least we'd have an idea if there was interest in that. And that's something we can do during this interim period of time. We can also usually think with if it was operated by city staff, what would be our operating model positions and work that into the city's financial plan as well. And the thing I have for us is when we talked about these projects in December with the community center, we said in addition, one of the criteria that we had was that it would not increase the city's operational subsidy for the community center. And that's right around three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. For the recreation center, we said that the project needed to operate on a revenue neutral basis from an operating standpoint. So, my question to the council is, do we need to have an operational plan in place by April fifteenth? And if we do, do we still need to have this requirement that it will not require an operating subsidy from the city of Pella? Cause that's still the expectation of the city council. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, that's what we're seeking direction on.
Okay, I, I'll say yes. I think that was part of our discussion about moving forward. That, those were two of the criteria was that the rec, the community center did increase the operating budget and the rec center did not have, need have a subsidy. So, I, I say yes. That's part of the decision process that we talked about all along.
I'll be the Grinch, I'll say that's unrealistic. We're expanding square footage, we're taking the community center. There's a huge demand to expand art programs. You aren't gonna do that for the same amount of money.
I'd like to stick with the same, the, the original agreement that we need to have revenue neutral.
I, I think that if we had an outside firm come in and operate the rec center, there's no magic in it. If they don't make money in two or three years, they're, they'll hand it back to us. And then, we can go with it. So, I think from my viewpoint, it seems like we should be doing a, a survey. Citywide or our, our primary service area, which includes about fifteen thousand people, survey those people, give them an opportunity to sign up for a membership and see what you get. See, and give them a discount first year. Find out how many people are, are willing to pay. I've talked to several people about this, Mayor, I know you, you hear from people that support it. I hear from people that don't support it. So, I guess maybe we hear what we wanna hear. I, I occasionally catch somebody on the street, all they want, if they want it, I said, how much are you willing to pay for it? Well, they, they don't have any idea what they're gonna pay for it. And, and so, it's very hard until you get down to, I have two thousand people willing to sign up, their families, a thousand dollars a year. Well, then, then, you know, then you got support. Then you really know what your support is. It's not just the school, Pella High School or the school district supports the rec center, but they don't bring any money with their support. Central College supports it, but they don't bring any money. Until you get the money and the support, you don't really have support. I don't think. You can have a lot of verbal support, but putting the money up means you got support. Either that or we vote on it, citywide referendum on the plan that you think we should be building and all the information, we're gonna borrow this much money, we're gonna pay this back, we're gonna raise taxes, uh, what's it gonna cost everybody? And I don't vote, then you find out where your supporters.
The cities that have rec centers, uh, the ones I have information on, operate out of deficit. And then, Ola, Carroll, uh, Spirit Lake, I think maybe Wagerly makes it. They don't, the ones that don't are places that get, uh, university support, high school support, you know, community support. I think a water ground South Dakota, they have a amazing aquatic center. Uh, it's right in their school. And the ones that have pools in the schools, those are the ones that really make. But, uh, well, John just said, uh, Central says, great idea. They haven't thrown bucks our way. I mean, Sioux Center has probably one of the best models in the state. And I don't know exactly how this works, someone's explained it to me once. But, uh, the city pays for some of the parks and the college pays for some fees here. But they have the pools and they have the tracks and, but it's a, it's a college, it's a high school, it's a community, uh, splitting. And Warren City and Northwestern has some, I don't know if anybody's familiar, I don't know if they have an aquatic center. But with everything else, it's a, it's a public school, a youth Christian, Northwestern College and community sharing and all their stuff. And we don't have that quite frankly involved. We, uh, everybody wants to do its own thing or everybody pays for its own thing. And as a result of that, right now in this building, the city pays the price for that. Although we do have excellent, uh, uh, corporation support. But we don't get the support from the schools and we don't get the support from university.
So, could we, could we agree though that we want this to be the case of the rec center? That we want it to be?
I was gonna say, I'll skip back to the question. You know, as I said to John last time, I have, I have a rebuttal for all of your concerns. Not tonight, tonight is tonight. We have to do that when we're, have to make a decision. We're not making, the only decision we're making now is to go to bid. And we agreed to do that in December. January four, we're gonna officially go to bid. Bits are gonna go out January five. We'll get them March eleven. We'll know the number between March eleven and April fifteen. We have to have the financial plan and the operating plan to satisfy four people here to, to move it forward. Can we agree that that's where we're at? And, and we've, we have said that, uh, we will make this requirement. Cause I know from our discussions, we talked about two things. We have to pay for it and we have to, have to operate it without a subsidy. We said that since we started talking, when we started talking in July, when we talked about it in July. So, I wanna stick with that plan, that we have to come with the money to pay for it and we have to come with the operations that won't, uh, hurt our budget. I'm very con, I'm personally confident we'll have that. But I think we still need to keep that as a requirement.
I, I was, frankly, I was surprised it was on the agenda. Cause I thought we were agreeing to go get bids. And I thought the res, that we have to do a resolution now to go get bids, is that correct?
Yeah, we have to officially.
Well, that would be nice to meet.
The four, yeah. The reason that we had this discussion tonight is just to make sure everybody understands the process. Because back a year ago in February, there was some confusion about going to bid meaning we were going to contract. We're not going to contract, we're going to bid. We hold the right to, uh, refuse all, reject any and all contracts. So, by going to bid, we've got someone that paid for the extra cost to go to bid. So, it's not costing the city anything to do that. Then we'll have the bids and then we'll know the numbers. And then, that's when we have to make the, the decisions that everybody's talking about and concerned about. So, just wanted to make sure there was no confusion about what we're actually doing.
I'm a bit of a back to the operations part, I'm pretty familiar with the idea of an RFP to see what an operator could do with it. I think if we're giving them, if we build the pool, we're giving them a Corvette and we're gonna hire a professional driver versus me giving them behind the wheel of a Corvette. For Jeanette, uh, Jeanette, do you have a Corvette before?
Yep, I was amazing at it.
I think we ought to similarly kind of see what, what our own internal RFP would be to run. So, I mean, I think that's my fair way to compare it. I think the idea of the city doing it as is neutral is, I don't disagree, Mr. Yovner. I don't know how you're gonna run this neutral without hiring significant managerial type operating coach, event person, uh, tournament coordinator, uh, concession coordinator, all of them. But I see it being something that would be great to see a professional RFP and then also have her own department kind of say, this is what we're gonna do. And we get to choose from hopefully multiple read options.
Dr. Carlstone, I thought those were very good points. And you just said that the comment's been made a couple times of recreational neutral. Keep in mind that if the plans were that we open up the recreation center, we would also be closing or be proposed to close the indoor pool that currently has a subsidy of about four hundred thousand dollars. So, between those, if you were to look at the, the programs on it, what we would propose or not propose is we're assuming that we'd be able to use some of that operating subsidy to help support the recreation center that would also move the pool and additional programming options for the community. So, all very good points. So, I think what I'm hearing, Mayor, we have to have both an operating So I think what I'm hearing, Mayor, we have to have both an operating as well as a financial and capital plan that needs to be prepared for our council's consideration on April fifteenth.
Yep, that's all we've ever talked about. Okay, let's move on to electrical utility rates and energy cost adjustment.
Hi, sir. What we have here, the last item on the night, is to talk about electric, our electric utility. We were recently notified by our power supplier that they're planning on increasing the city's cost of purchase power, or the power they provide to the city by about five percent to the city of Pella. Now, the way the city ordinance is when we set this up, and I would also like to mention, when we originally went into Missouri River and, or contracted, well, the effective year was two thousand and twelve. At that time, we decreased electric rates by about three percent. So it was a big deal for the city of Pella. And that may not sound like a huge decrease, but the years leading up to that, we were just the opposite. We had what was called an energy cost adjustment. And that was somewhere in the neighborhood of four to five percent a year as far as electrical increases that were part of routine at the city of Pella. We decreased those rates in two thousand and twelve and we haven't adjusted them since on it. Our communication this evening is, we were notified by our power supplier of their five percent cost increase announced about six hundred thousand dollars a year for the electric utility. According to the ordinance, that was based off a cost of service study, when we adopted our rates on it, they set what's called a baseline level for the energy cost adjustment. So what they said, and the way the city ordinance works is, our rates are good for everything that goes up to about seventy-seven dollars per megawatt hour. That's our first power cost plus transmission cost. The rate structure is satisfactory up to that point. If it goes above that, council could automatically pass along any power supply increases that we deem by passing a resolution. Where we're at, when we look at the low growth of the city, plus the power supply cost, plus the transmission cost, we believe we'll be at seventy-two dollars per megawatt hour on this. So we're still below the threshold, looking at our pro forma, above and beyond the city ordinance. We think we can maintain electric rates again for this next year, which would be calendar year twenty-five. And it's more just a communication issue outside the budget. When we get to the budget process, there's going to be a lot of things we're going to be considering on it. So we thought that we just have the communication, if council wanted to have any further dialogue about this matter, we'd be happy to do it. And then, well, our end result is, we're not proposing an electric rate increase at this time, just to take away, Mayor. But we'd be more than happy to answer any questions on the power supply increase by this year.
Okay. Any other questions?
I can't think of anything that didn't go up in price since two thousand and twelve.
Yeah. A rough year for some people.
Yeah, I would also like to say, I love to tell a story. This was roughly twenty years ago. We did it, I would get it, but to further dovetail onto that, twenty years ago, there was a study in the state of Iowa on electric utility rates for public utilities. That time, we ranked forty-nine dot fifty utility samples as far as the highest rates in the state of Iowa. And they helped me out on it, but their most recent APPA survey or study that they had roughly about a hundred and thirty-eight utilities, somewhere right around that. We ranked, there was twenty-three, twenty-four utilities that had lower rates in the city of Pella. Most of those that did have lower rates in the city of Pella, two factors exist. They either had federal allocation of hydroelectric power from the federal government, that's not necessarily market-based power cost, or they had large industrial loads on it. So the traction that we had twenty years ago to where we're at right now is remarkable for the city's electric utility. So I think it's been an outstanding job at the city council as far as planning for the electric utility. And that's what's allowed us to maintain our electric rates and also make market traction as far as is our rates.
Okay. Down here, he would try and raise electric power rates, but I think we'll be okay.
All right.
So anybody have any other questions about the, I know you already asked about soccer complex. Are there any other things that have been in the discussion phase, questions about? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Hopkins Carlstone, all in favor, please say yes. Both in all manner, please call and roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hey, Brian.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Ray or us?
Yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned.